Calling the meeting to order for the Silver City Planning and Zoning Commission, Thursday, November 6, 2025. If you would be so good as to rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance first and the New Mexico flag second. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the symbol of perfect friendship among the united cultures. Thank you. And I'd like to welcome Dale Lane, who is here this evening. Thank you very much for coming. I very much appreciate it. If we could please do a roll call.
Commissioner Stone?
Present.
Commissioner Moody?
Present.
Commissioner Bayless?
Present.
Commissioner Middlestaff? Chairman Wheaton Smith?
Present. We do have a quorum, and Commissioner Middlestaff was on an excused absence for a prior commitment. So that's that. Next item is the approval of the agenda. Has everyone had a chance to look at the agenda?
Yes.
Any changes to the agenda?
No.
Hearing none, it's unanimously approved. Next item on the list is approval of the minutes, the minutes being Tuesday, October 7. Has everyone had a chance to look at the minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Are there any obvious changes or comments?
No.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I move we approve the minutes for October 7.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second, any debate? Hearing none, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, it meant the minutes are unanimously approved. Next item on the agenda is reports. Are there any reports at this stage of the meeting?
Not at this time, Chairman.
Not at this time. Next item on the agenda is if there's any community input. Not seeing a bunch of hands waving all over the place, we don't have any of that. Next item on the list is a public hearing, and this is where we get very formal. This is a quasi-judicial process, and we will be following Robert's rules very strictly. And the case is variance VA 25-01, a request for a variance to front setback requirements to resituate the mobile home setbacks due to property's unique position within the floodway for the property addressed as 3906 North Fowler Avenue, Silver City, New Mexico, the applicant is Gary and Denise Placencio. Does any commissioner, has any commissioner had any expertise conversations with any parties to this case?
No.
Anyone with a financial interest?
No.
Nor have I. We therefore do have a quorum. Next, this is, as I mentioned, a quasi-judicial process, which means that all questions and answers should be directed through the chair. And we are going to take a sworn testimony, but before that, could I please ask staff, have we received any emails or letters that were not notarized and so on and so forth?
No, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Would all of those who think they may want to speak, please go to the podium, and we will do the swearing in. Please raise your right hand and say after me, I, Stitch Your Name.
I, Jackie Reese.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That the testimony I shall give this evening?
That the testimony I shall give this evening.
Before this commission?
Before this commission.
Shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Under penalty of perjury?
Under penalty of perjury.
Thank you. And then if we could complete the log of people who have been sworn in. And if staff would be so good as to present their report.
Chairman, if I may add, in your packet, it does indicate from the applicant that she has authorized representatives on her behalf this evening, which is Robert Reese.
Thank you. Yes, I'd see.
Thank you, Chair. Request VA 2501, a request for a variance to the section 3.4.2b, street setback overlay zones for the installation of a manufactured home into the 10-foot front setbacks for the property addressed as 3906 North Fowler Avenue, Silver City, New Mexico. The applicants are Gary and Denise Placencio. Analysis: Gary and Denise submitted the variance application to the Community Development Department on October 6, 2025. Due to the plot's proximity to the Pinos Altos Creek, the current primary structure falls in a regulatory floodway. The Town of Silver City Land Use Code and the Town of Silver City Land Use and Zoning Code of 2010, Appendix C, Article 4, Section 4.1.2, Definitions, Subsection NN 37, defines a regulatory floodway as a channel of a river or other water course and the adjacent land areas that must be reserved to discharge the base flood without cumulatively increasing the water surface elevation more than the designated height. This identifies the specific geographical area, the river channel, and the adjacent land that must be, that must remain unobstructed. This serves to establish boundaries where development is highly restricted to minimize potential damage. By encroaching on the front setback, the proposed placement of the new primary structure would be located in an area of special flood hazard designated as Zone AE. Appendix C, Article 4, Section 4.1.2, Definitions, Subsection F 5, defines the area of special flood hazard as the land in a floodplain within a community subject to a 1% or greater chance of flood in a given year. This area may be designated as Flood A on a flood hazard boundary map. After detailing rate making has been completed in preparation for the publication of the firm, Zone A usually is refined into Zone A, AE, AO, A 1 through 99, VO, V 1 through 30, VE, or V. The proposed new construction will comply with all regulations within Section 4.1.5, Provisions for the Flood Hazard Reduction (AE). Number one, all new construction or substantial improvements shall be designed or modified and adequately anchored to prevent flotation, collapse, or lateral movement of the structure resulting from hydrodynamic or hydrostatic loads, including the effects of buoyancy. All new construction or substantial improvement shall be constructed by methods and practices that minimize flood damage. All new construction or substantial improvements shall be constructed with materials resistant to flood damage. All new construction or substantial improvement shall be constructed with electrical, heating ventilation, plumbing, air conditioning equipment, and other service facilities that are designed and/or located to prevent water from entering or accumulating within the components during the conditions of flooding. All new replacement water supplies, all new replacement water supply systems shall be designed to minimize or eliminate infiltration of floodwaters into the system. New replacement sanitary sewage systems shall be designed to minimize or eliminate infiltration of water floodwaters into the system and discharge from the system into floodwaters. On-site waste disposal systems shall be located to avoid impairment to them or contamination from them during flooding, as well as Section 4.1.5b1. New construction and substantial improvement of any residential structure shall have the lowest floor, including the basement, elevated to a minimum of 12 inches above the base flood elevation. A registered professional engineer, architect, or land surveyor shall submit a certification to the floodplain administrator that the standard of this subsection, as proposed in Section 4.1.4(c1a), is satisfied, as required by the Federal Emergency Management Agency. After a departmental review of the application, the code enforcement, fire, police, public works, and meters department had no comment. The utilities noted that there is a 10-foot sewer easement 39 feet from the southern end of the property. As noted in the packet, this will not impact construction of the new primary structure. The engineering division stipulates, stipulated that the new structure would require an engineered foundation with a stamp of approval from an architect or an engineer. Citizens' Participation Report. As required by Section 6.2.11 of the Land Use Code of 2010, the Community Development Department contacted 19 landowners identified by Grant County Assessor's parcel data by U.S. mail within 300 feet of the project area. Of the 19 landowners notified, one letter was returned to the Community Development Department as undeliverable. The applicant received two phone calls. One neighbor wanted clarification on the proposal, the other voiced support for the proposal. Findings: The Planning and Zoning Commission will apply and make relevant all seven of the following findings to the request at hand. Number one, the hardship of which the applicant complains is one that is unique to the applicant, rather than suffered by the neighbors or the general public. Number two, hardship relates to the applicant's land or property. Number three, the hardship was not created by the deliberate action of the applicant or by one of his, by one under his control, and reasonable remedies are not presently available. Number four, the granting of this variance is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan. Number five, the granting of this variance is in harmony with the purposes and intent of the Land Use Code. Number six, the granting of this variance will not be injurious to the neighborhood surrounding the property where the variance is proposed, and otherwise is not detrimental to the public welfare. Number seven, the variance will not result in the extension, expansion, or enlargement of a non-conforming structure in violation of Article 7, and will not authorize the initial initiation of a non-conforming use of land. Recommendation: The Community Development Department staff recommends the approval as it has met all of the following findings based off the information submitted in the application. Number one, the hardship of which the applicant complains is one that is unique to the applicant, rather than suffered by the neighbors or the general public. Number two, the hardship relates to the applicant's land or property. Number three, the hardship is not created by the deliberate action of the applicant or by one under his control, and reasonable remedies are not presently available. Number four, the granting of this variance is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan. Number five, granting of this variance is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the Land Use Code. Number six, the granting of this variance does not injure the neighborhood surrounding the property where the variance is proposed, and otherwise is not detrimental to public welfare. Number seven, the variance does not result in the extension, expansion, or enlargement of a non-conforming structure in violation of Article 7, and does not authorize the initiation of a non-conforming use of land. Thank you, Chair.
Does that, does that complete the town's case in chief?
Chairman, if I may, so within your packet, there is an elevation certificate from a licensed surveyor, which does indicate that the area is within the Zone AE. Prior to this document, it showed on the FEMA flood map that it was in very close proximity to the actual floodway. So this location where they're proposing the new installation of the home is the only area that they would be able to construct on on their property, also inclusive of that sewer easement that is highlighted within your packet as well. I did speak with the floodplain administrator before he recently retired, and discussing with him, mobile homes are often already elevated because of just the nature of their construction. So he just said that the requirement of an engineered foundation would be the main requirement that would be applied by the town, and that usually since manufactured homes sit so high, sometimes regular site-built homes would be required to be elevated in that same way. So manufactured homes have a benefit in that aspect, that it doesn't make it more difficult on a property owner where they would have to elevate the whole structure separately. So I just wanted to provide that clarification.
Does any commissioner have any questions for staff?
Just a definition of terms, engineered foundation, what does that mean?
Chairman, Commissioner Bayless, so based on calculations of potential flood events, engineers have to create a foundation where it is securely fastened to the foundation in case of an amount of water, they would calculate the potential of a mass flood event. If it were to hit the building, then it would be able to withstand those forces without floating away. That's the main thing. So it has to be provided by a licensed engineer or an architect.
So that would be concrete or extra rebar?
Chairman, Commissioner Bayless? I'm personally, I don't know.
Just curious.
Yeah, so in some cases, it's, it's elevating the foundation, it's specific tie-downs that the manufactured home may have. It's all dependent on what their calculations are. So ultimately, I'm not very familiar with that, but as far as from the discussions I had with the floodplain administrator, those could be potential requirements by an engineer depending on the flood.
Thank you. Any other questions from anyone on the commission?
I don't think so.
I have the same question.
Okay. Hearing none, does that then complete the town's case in chief?
Yes, Chairman.
It does, thank you. Next would be, I would ask the applicant or their representative, if you'd be good enough to come to the podium and present your case and a couple of things. You will notice there's a button there. Make sure you've got a red light or a green light or some kind of light by pushing the button, and that connects you to the system.
Got a red light, so I guess that means that I don't have to stop, right?
Yeah, you're in business.
Good evening. My name's Robert Bobby Reese, and I'm here representing Gary and Denise Placencio on this application. And some of the questions that were, that were asked in the application was, number one, the hardship of the applicant complains is one of the, unique to the applicant, rather than one suffered by the neighbors, to the general public. And yes, the location of our lot is directly adjacent to the floodway, and we were, they were unaware of the majority of the lot being located in the floodway. Number two, the hardship relates to the applicant land and property, yes. Number three, the hardship was not created by deliberate action of the applicant or by one under his control, and reasonable remedies are not presently, presently available. The location of the, yes, the location of the floodway was not, is out of our control, and we're not aware during the purchase of that property. The granting of variance is consistent with the town comprehensive plan, yes. The town comprehensive plan references infield development. And number five, the granting of variance is in harmony with the purposes and intent of the Land Use Code, yes. The proposed structure is residentially and in nature conforming with the residential zone. Six, the granting of the variance will not be injurious to the neighborhood surrounding the property where the variance is proposed, and otherwise is not detrimental to the public welfare, yes. The plans for foundation will be engineered to prevent any issues to adjoining properties. Seven, the variance will not result in any extension, expansion, or enlargement of non-conforming structures in violation of Article 7, and will not authorize, and will not authorize the initiation of any non-conforming use of land. The answer is yes. I stand for any questions?
Any questions?
Commission might have?
The councilors. Sorry, commissioners. Am I allowed to screw up once in a while? Don't look at me like that. Any questions for any of the commissioners?
So the, this diagram or this overhead shot shows some kind of structure on the lot, and that, that's, that's the existing structure?
I don't have that, I don't have that document, but I'm assuming that is the existing structure on that property as it is now, yes.
Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Yes, so the manufactured home that is shown in the image is currently in place. They will be removing that home and then installing a new home in the front setback, potentially.
Any other questions?
I think we answered them mostly.
And this is purely for information?
Yes.
So it's not relevant to the findings of the case? And will the replacement, will the new one be a manufactured home?
Yes, it would, it'd be a new one.
Thank you. Does staff have any questions of the applicant?
Not at this time.
And does this therefore complete your case in chief?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the public who has not been sworn in who wishes to comment either for or against? Do I hear a motion to approve? All motions are phrased positively, so I thought I'd mention that. And when you do make the motion, can you please add into it the fact that the, you believe the seven findings are met?
I move that we approve the request VA 25-01, a request for a variance, for a variance to Section 3.4.2b, street setback of overlay zones for the installation of a manufactured home into the 10-foot front setback for the property addressed as 3906 North Fowler Avenue, Silver City, New Mexico, and the part I'm supposed to add in is?
How many findings are met?
And all the findings, all findings have been remedied and met.
And that would be 1 through 7?
1 through 7, yes.
Okay, great. We have a motion, is there a second?
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second, any debate? No other final comments from staff? This is very straightforward. In which case, I would ask for a roll call vote on the motion to approve case number VA 25-01, as previously stated in the motion.
Commissioner Stone?
Aye.
Commissioner Moody?
Aye.
Commissioner Bayless?
Aye.
Chairman Wheaton Smith?
Aye. The ayes have it, the motion is approved, therefore, subject to appeal, the variance will be granted now. There is a timeline for these things, which Community Development will be glad to explain to the applicant, and Community Development will be drafting up a notice of decision which will summarize everything we've discussed this evening on this case. And the second that's mailed, there is a timeline in which appeals can be made. Typically, one has to demonstrate in an appeal the basis for it, and why one has the standing to make an appeal. Does someone have a financial interest? Do you think planning and zoning has made a mistake in its conclusions? And there's a timeline, and at the end of that timeline, then that's the way it is, and life moves forward. But the case can be appealed, and if it does, it goes to the town council, and any appeals that happen to them go to the district court. And with that, absent any other further comment, that closes this hearing. Thank you for participating. The next item on the list is continued business, of which I see we have none. The next item would be new business, of which I see we have none, reports from staff.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you all. We do have three public hearings for the December 6 meeting, just so you all are aware.
What are the nature of those, of the three choices, which, what are they?
December, what's it?
December, yeah.
I think it's three conditional use permits. No, two conditional use and a variance.
Oh, okay. No zoning.
Any other reports? Not hearing any. Next item is reports from commissioners. Commissioner Stone, have you any? Hearing none. Commissioner Moody?
I don't have anything.
Commissioner Bayless?
Nothing from this chair.
And not much from me. I was on the radio today, talking about various things that we've done and what planning and zoning is going to be doing. And I would remind everyone that there are a lot of items that we still need to look at in the Land Use Code, because we had a lot of public comments. Some of them may or may not relate to the town, but there's going to be work to do. And every January, Planning and Zoning will review issues that have happened in the previous 12 months, roughly, and any of the issues we already have documented. And you will then select them, some of them to work. And throughout the year, one will work on corrections to that, and at the end of the year, the outcome is probably going to be a text amendment, just like we did the other day, and there'll be a resolution, and it'll go to the town council. And this way, every year, Land Use and Zoning Code will be kept up to date, which I think is absolutely wonderful. And I strongly encourage the commission to work as hard as you can, because I think there's a lot of things that are going to be changing in the future. because I think there's a lot of things that are going to be changing in the future. And I'm very proud of all the commissioners that we have. And I very much thank you. And that's pretty much what I said on the radio. And with that, unless there's any other comments from staff, commissioners, I'm wondering if there might be a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion that we adjourn.
I second it.
We have a motion and a second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Not hearing any? That's it?